Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 8, 2022, at 6:03 PM. My name is Joe Baker, and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight to call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District One, Councilmember Cindy Stein?
Here.
District Two, Councilmember John Rodriguez is absent this evening. District Three, Councilmember Chris Parker?
Here.
District Four, Councilmember James Douglas?
Here.
District Five, Councilmember Sandra Schultz?
Here.
Four members of the city council are present, and we have a quorum present this evening. I would like to welcome Pastor Trent Enriquez with Keeping it Real Community Church, who will lead us in prayer. If everyone would please rise for the prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, Lord Jesus, we want to thank you for this day, Father God. We want to thank you for everything that you are doing within our communities, Father God. Father God, I ask that you allow everyone in this room to have an open mind, an open heart, and open ears to the Holy Spirit. Father God, I ask that your favor is over all of us every step of the way as this council meets to continue to make outstanding decisions for the city of Kennedy. Father God, I ask that you are with them every step of the way, not just today, but for all of the days to come. Father God, we thank you, we magnify you, and in Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen and amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Enriquez. Next on the agenda is number five, citizen comment. Mr. Lynn, do we have any signed up for comments this evening?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I didn't see a sign up back there, and I apologize.
Yes, Gretchen, please.
Okay.
I'm Gretchen Dupick. I live at 125 Levonett Drive. I am in Councilor Douglas's district. I've been a resident of the city of Kennedy since 1982, a long, long time. And during all of that time, I would just say I have observed and appreciated all of the work of the San Antonio River Authority, and all of the improvements that they have made in protecting us along the creek and the waterway. I understand they were a big help way back when flooding occurred before I moved here. And so I know that they have the knowledge, the skills, the personnel, and they're always looking ahead and looking out for not only the citizens of Kennedy, but everyone that lives along the San Antonio River Authority right away or the areas that are impacted. And so I would hope, and I really appreciate all that Sarah has done in the last, I think, probably maybe ten years as we worked together to plan and develop the Escondido Creek Parkway. It is my hope that San Antonio River Authority will retain management and control over the Escondido Creek Parkway. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Is there anyone else that would like to make a comment at this time? If not, then we'll move along to Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentation, Small Business of the Month Award. I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas the business community of the city of Kennedy is crucial to the city's economic health, and whereas the revenue generated by the business community allows the city to provide services that positively affect the quality of life for its residents, and whereas the jobs created by the business community support the quality of life that Kennedy residents enjoy, and whereas the business community provides valuable support that fosters and encourages public-private partnerships through institutions such as the Kennedy Chamber of Commerce, the public schools in the community, and others, and whereas the city values its existing business community and commits to making every effort to retain that strong economic base, and whereas the city recognizes and appreciates the dedication, innovation, and entrepreneurial spirit displayed by Eccles Funeral Home. This establishment has been in business since 1886 and has had four generations running this family-owned business. Now therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, publicly commend Eccles Funeral Home and hereby proclaim March 2022 as Eccles Funeral Home Small Business of the Month. Congratulations to Eccles Funeral Home. They wanted to be here with us this evening, but they were unable to send a representative. But we'll make sure that they get this plaque and this certificate honoring them for their many years of service to this community. So. Next item on the agenda is number eight, Departmental Reports. First on the list is the Public Works Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. Lynn. You have in your packets a copy of my report for February of 2022, and I'm going to go over the summary of the activities for February of 2022, and then if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer. The management activities that we had for the month, we started the hiring process on Brandon Sistos, this new person that we're trying to bring on board. We started a hiring process on Raymond Borum. That's another person that we're trying to bring on board to join our team. We've compiled all the required information for the emergency preparedness plan that we need to submit to TCQ. I will be submitting that pretty shortly, but I have all the information compiled for that. I was able to submit the water use survey for the year 2021, so that's complete and done with. Some of the projects that we have going right now, we performed a walkthrough on the eight-inch water line that was laid for the Kennedy Apartments over from the pump station over here, 719, all the way cross-country back up to Highway 181. That project is complete. The bacteriologicals were taken and they are clear, and so we're good to go on that. The bore at Loma Alta Street has been done, and it has been tied into the existing line. There are still some little odds and ends that they need to come back and address there by your house. And I talked to the contractor, and they plan to be here either, they're going to try to get here either late this week or early next week, but they will take care of that. But as far as the bores themselves, both on Loma Alta and on Karnes, they have been completed, they have been tied in, and they're good to go. Let's see. We also got with Mr. Lynn, we were having an issue with the sewer line between Third and Fourth Street over here between Live Oak and Daley. We tried to jet that thing from one end, and we kept hitting solid, and we tried from the other end, and it just, trees and roots and everything else had got in there and just plugged that line. It was old, vetrified clay or clay tile, what they call sewer line, and it was just not going to give. So I got with Mr. Lynn, and I told him we needed to replace that line in that section of that alley to give the people service, and we were able to accomplish that. That's done, it's in place, everything's good to go there. We also replaced two manholes along that. The 800 KW generator that was ordered for the RO plant has arrived, it has been placed in place. Thursday, they're scheduling a shutdown. We've been working on it, they've been installing the new transfer switch and running wire. They're scheduling a shutdown on Thursday for hopefully about two hours. We should be okay as far as water, we should have enough to maintain, but we are going to have to shut it down so that they can land some of these wires in the transfer switch and at the generator. Once that's done, we'll bring it back up, we'll start running the plant back to get back into operation. And then, once we get everything in place, the people from Kohler, which is the brand of the generator, will come out and they will actually do a startup on the generator. We intend to run that thing for about four hours to make sure it can run everything we want it to run. So we're going to test it under load and everything and make sure everything's good, and we'll be good to go on that. The other generators for the wells, one of them has already been shipped, it has not arrived, but it's on its way. And then the other two, I believe they're saying late May, early June, when we might get those. But I'll keep you up to date as that progresses, I'll let you all know where we're at with Some training activities, there was a monthly Texas Water Utility Association meeting held last month in three rivers. In attendance were myself, Hector Salinas, and Chris Cortez. And that was a pretty good meeting, and the topic there was safety. And we have been asked, and I have agreed for Kennedy to host the next meeting, which will be on March the 15th, and will be held here at the One Crew Training Center. We're looking forward to that. Let's see. Everything else there is the list of reports that's in your packet. The Water MOR is prepared by Hector Salinas. The Water Loss Report was reported, was put together by me. The Water Stage Restrictions was also put together by me. The Field Operations Report was also put together by me. The Wastewater Treatment Plant Report was put together by Mark Garcia, Waste Water Superintendent. And we had two SSOs, which are sewer system overflows, that we reported to TCQ, and those are also in your packet. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Next, under Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, is Police Chief Report. Chief Ash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be brief. Animal Control for the month, as you can see, we had 43 calls, picked up 14 dogs and 21 cats. Cats are still continuing to be detected. Had six dogs reclaimed, two adopted, the rest took five. We issued 21 warnings and 20 citations for last month, so citations continue to be up. They're doing a pretty good job of citing people for violations. For the police department, just a couple of things I wanted to mention, we had about 96 hours last month of training. I try to keep training hours up, so I'll put that usually on the record, so you can see how much we're doing. We try to do a lot of that. Our canine, for those of you keeping up with him, he has been training really well, he's been working with, we've had some outside agencies come in and work with him, he's been doing some work with some task force in the area. He will do his certification next week, I believe it is, with the National Association, and then he'll be done, fully done. But we've been working with him really well, I watch him work all the time, and he's really good, so he shouldn't have any problem. He should be up and running fully next week, so we're good with that. I think next weekend. I just did one, I did want to give kudos to one of our officers. I don't know how many of you watch our Facebook page, but Officer Kelly made a traffic stop last weekend. Guy burned through a red light, standard traffic stop. I hate the word routine because traffic stops are routine, but anyway, normal traffic stop. And during that traffic stop, he discovered that the person had marijuana, and they had a little bit of marijuana, went a little bit of marijuana. He had about 35 pounds of marijuana. That is not personal use, that's a lot of marijuana. Street value of about $120,000 worth of marijuana. So a lot of it was actually purchased in legal states. You can see it's packaged in legal states and brought here for sale here, so it was not. But that $120,000 exceeds what we did all last year on one stop, so we're very proud of it for that.
Will we allow you to clap for that?
I'm sorry?
Can we clap for that?
Yeah, sure. We can have that off the street. We are not going to be burning it in a pit anywhere. That's kind of old school, you would take the weed out and burn it in a pit. All the cops will stand around and eat donuts. So, and then briefly, Mr. Mayor, unless you'll have some questions. Last month is kind of, February's slow, not a lot going on, so.
Any questions for the chief? If not, thank you for your report. Next, under Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, is Building Department and Code Compliance Reports. Mr. Albiol?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. In your packet, you find the Building Department Report. For the month of February, we didn't have as many permits ever to be issued, but we anticipate that that will be going up hopefully for the month of March, which we're looking at the month of March as being a good month for people starting to build, starting to add to their homes, or whatever the case may be. We did collect over $2,768 for the month in permits. We did issue six building permits, six electrical permits, two plumbing permits. The city did not collect any kind of revenue as far as any kind of liens at the moment, but we anticipate that will be a little bit better for the month of March. We had a total of 28 calls for the month of February. We did have 49 collection stations, dumps at the collection station. We anticipate that, we're trying to bring that a little higher. We anticipate the community, hopefully that the community can come and dispose of their trash on Saturdays. We're open every Saturday from 8 to 12, so we'd like for the citizens to come and throw away any kind of trash that they have. We'd like for the citizens to anticipate that. Other than that, we do have a spring clean tire roundup for April. It was scheduled for April 23rd. I think we're going to be moving that through April 30th, and that is a tire roundup. If you have any kind of tires or any kind of loose tires that you're home with, we're hoping that you can bring that on April 30th. April 30th, that's free of charge, you can bring it to the 201 School Street. So mark that on your calendars, we will put that on our webpage, and we will send out flyers to people to participate in that. So we're looking at April 30th for a spring tire roundup, 201 School Street, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We're also looking for the month of March, doing a lot of spring cleaning ourselves as far as the city. We're sending out violation letters throughout the city. One thing that we're going to be doing that is fairly new, is we're going to be looking at all the buildings that have to tag with graffiti. And we're looking at the graffiti, and we're looking at these violation locations, identifying and sending violation letters to wherever we see graffiti on buildings or structures. So we're anticipating to send violation letters to those people to get those corrected and get those cleaned up. We also have, in District One, we also have several violations that we're sending letters out to District One as far as junk vehicles, dangerous structures, and high grass and weeds. So in District One, we did send out at least five violation letters in certain group, in area, on Grooman Street and Russell Street, so we're also working in that area. All over town, we're looking at all the districts as far as getting things cleaned up. We'd like the citizens in Kennedy to contact me by email or by phone. If you have any questions or any violations that you may have concerns with, please feel free to give me a call, email me, so that we can identify those violations and look at them and try to get those places cleaned up. We want our community cleaned up, and we'd like participation from the citizens to let us, to let me know what we need to go and look and identify. So we're glad to have the participation from the community. So other than that, we look at March as being a good month for, again, for building permits and so forth like that. So with that being said, we're trying to clean up this town, and we're doing it one property at a time.
Any questions from the council? I'm glad to hear about the tire roundup, I think a lot of people will be able to take advantage of that, get rid of a lot of the junk tires that are around town, so appreciate you moving that forward.
Hopefully we have a good turnout.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, under Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, Streets and Parks Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the Streets Report, crews worked on patching a total of 11 days using 26 and 3/4 cubic yards of type D plus asphalt and 23 cubic yards of ProPatch. They also patched a total of 160 potholes in a seven-day stretch using 21 and 1/2 cubic yards of type D asphalt. Also used 8 and 1/2 cubic yards of base and six bags of Portland cement. Totalling out for the month was 71 and 1/4 cubic yards of asphalt and 8.5 cubic yards of base. They also went through, during the month when we had the cold spell with the little bit of ice that we had, and they treated some small bridge structures on one day, totaling out to 13.6 cubic yards of sand that was spread over the structures. They swept 12 days during the month, also worked one day hauling off brush and removal of one tree, totaling four trailer loads of brush to the collection station. The guys also repaired one sign during the month. They worked on a couple of perimeter fences in our shop and yard area, worked on drainage, cleaning out some curb and gutters for five days, removing 96 cubic yards of dirt and silt. Worked out at the complex, they helped the guys out at the complex build some bases for the flags that we put at Center Field on every single field that we have out there on the complex. They used a total of 58 bags of ready mix with eight bags of Portland cement in order to build those small little structures. They replaced three trash carts, delivered two new trash carts, and removed four, as well as cleaning up the receptacles and everything downtown on eight days. Performed PM two days. On one of the days that we performed PM, we actually had a little safety training in how to properly remove and replace the blades on the zero turns, and what to look for up underneath on the decks and everything else. So being that we do have quite a few very young employees, it's something that they were needing in order to replace the blades on our zero turns whenever that comes up. Also worked three days out there trying to move some, haul some dirt from the Nottingham lots over to where we're connecting the two trails. The crews ended up moving 364 cubic yards of dirt in order to keep working on that dirt phase of that project. Just an update, I know we had it on Savvy Citizen and on our webpage about the 792 closure and the reroute and everything else for the Escondido Creek Bridge. Spoke with Representative for Tech Stop today, and it was supposed to have started on the 7th, but they pushed it back to where they're going to end up closing 792 on Thursday the 10th. So on Thursday, they'll have to reroute traffic back around to the designated areas. It's on there, we have the maps as far as foot routes, the people can take the local traffic, and also it's not going to be an area where they're able to use as a truck route. Truck route's going to be designated to go back across 80 into Karnes City and back around. 719 is not a designated truck route, so there won't be any trucks allowed to go in front of the school on 719, just to let you all know. But they are out there currently working on placing sediment logs and silt fences along the right-of-way lines, and that's where they're at on that project. We also had one resignation for the month. That's what I have on my Streets Report.
I would like to make a comment. Thank you so much, you're doing a great job downtown. We were at the Kennedy Family Practice this week and noticed that you did a really good job cleaning the street over there. It looked very nice.
Yes, ma'am, that was quite a bit of silt built up against that curb and gutter. When the guys got into it, it was a little bit thicker than what we thought. At first, we thought maybe an inch or two of silt, but no, we're looking at about four to six inches.
Yeah, well, it looks so much better, so much cleaner, and I bet they appreciate it too. Thanks, you did good.
Any other questions from the council?
I had a question about the connecting the walking trails from Escondido Creek Parkway to Joe Valley Park. My wife and I had started up walking again as the weather's gotten a little warmer, and we noticed you've done some dirt work. Is that, is it going to run along that fence line?
Yes, sir.
Where the dirt work's being done right now?
Yes, sir.
I wasn't sure about the route, and where exactly will it connect at Joe Valley?
Right there where the curve turns in, going, when you're going west on the curve, or actually on the trail, when you start, you normally go west, and as soon as it makes that bend right there to go back kind of south, right behind the Johnny Bear Field is where we're going to tie it in. We have 10 RCP sitting right there, 18-inch RCP that we have, that we're going to bridge over the top to allow the water to flow through there and make its way down towards the drop endless that we have behind the larger field. But it's going to tie in, we're going to bridge over the top of that, connect it together because there's already a high area right there by one of the telephone poles. But it's right there where there's two corrugated metal pipes sticking out, it'll tie in right there in that area.
Sounds like a good plan. Then currently, we're still moving forward with 10-foot wide reinforced concrete?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when do you anticipate construction to begin and finish?
I'm hoping once we get some of the other stuff and logistically set up with making sure that we're going to have a batch plant or somebody that's going to be able to provide us with the concrete, because that's one of the things that we have to make sure of, that we have a mixed design that'll work for the concrete that we're going to lay. So we're looking at somebody to try to bring us enough concrete to get it done, and it's going to, it'll probably take us about a week to get it done once we start, and that's after we end up either tying rebar for the toes, and then we're probably going over the top with some route, tackle, wire mesh.
So about one week construction time?
One week of pouring.
And when do you think you might be able to start?
I'm hoping that we can get it starting maybe in the middle of April, so I'm looking by May to have that completed.
Pretty soon.
Those are pretty set timeline that Mr. Lynn and I had set up as far as from start to finish in order to get it completed. We've just had a lot of other projects kind of hit, and we're pulling from one area to another, so.
That'd be great if that gets finished before summer, when people really enjoy the parks.
Yes, sir.
Great, thanks, I appreciate all your work on that.
Not a problem. It's the guys, the guys doing excellent job in what they do. They're learning at the same time, but we're pushing, trying to push forward. I push a little hard at times, it'll be well worth it.
We appreciate it. Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, quick question, where are we on the street projects?
The street projects have been out, they were put out, and they've been put in the paper. I'm receiving interest from, I have to contact the three contractors tomorrow as far as some of the detailed work that goes into the hot mix and the ribbons that we're pouring out there on one of East and Snookum. So they had a couple of questions in regards to what exactly we're looking at, but there are, right now, I think I have seven contractors that are interested in giving us bids for Houston Street, Snookum, Buena Vista, Jones, and Dahl right now. And then the other ones fall in right afterwards. We're kind of phasing them through there to where we don't have it, to where we have one contractor get all the bids, and then it just drags the jobs out, but if it happens that way, it just might, but we're trying to stagger them a little bit so that way that 90-day window that they're going to have in order to complete the project from start to finish doesn't come into, they don't get into a bind towards the end if they've ended up being awarded all of the contracts. But the other roadways are on there, so as soon as we can get the bids in for these, then the other roadways that we had set on that sheet will go into effect, and then we'll put those out for bid as well. But yes, all the roadways that were submitted are on there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Where are we at on East Main as far as?
Where are we at on East Main as far as they're having to come back and change things?
We're, we're talking to Dirt Boys, to Russell and John, the two owners of the company, and we're trying to get some of the, some of the technical stuff kind of settled down and then if we can get them to come back and start taking out panels, then, then we'll go there. But we're looking at trying to strategically do it to where we're not shutting down the whole roadway or, or sections at a time. If we can do it to where we have a panel on one side and we have access for the, for the public to drive through on that area, and then we can go further down and hit some at the same time because of just, just the cost. I mean, regardless of whether they pour two yards or, or ten yards, they're still going to get charged for that first truck. The first truck that comes in, you get charged the ten yards regardless of whether you use one, two or ten. They're, they're hitting you for the full truckload the first go around. So, if we can get them to where they can hit panels, to where they can hit and go take care of those and then wait for the cure time to, to allow traffic back on it and then jump in between because there's, there's quite a few panels, as you saw that day that we walked through, that need to be, that need to be fixed.
Yes. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council? Thank you for your report, sir. Appreciate it.
Still have parks.
Oh, that's right, parks. Moving on.
As far as parks are concerned, at the sports complex, the crews did do some dragging and sweeping on fourteen days, worked on the dugout for eight days, cleaning up trash and out of the receptacles and on the grounds area twelve days. High school softball and baseball has started. We hosted five games during the month while they were out there. We're also, we're moving forward to try to complete some of the ADA requirements so we can get that kind of knocked out for the, for the concession stand and the press box. I have, I'm supposed to have them guys come back tomorrow so they can start ironing out some of that stuff. I spoke with Mr. Jeffords and he's going to try to send one of the guys out tomorrow. So, hopefully, we can get some of that hashed out. We can get the ADA inspection completed and move forward and try to complete the, the elevator, and we'll move forward with that. As far as the kid parking pavilion that we trimmed and mowed two days, cleaned up trash sixteen days, went back and finished up skinning the palm trees for two days. Walking trail, bridge, basketball courts and gazebo, the crews mowed and we trimmed two days, picked up trash sixteen days and collected a lot of the branches and debris on four different days. They had a, a water line bust out there, so they worked on that water line for two days. So, also, they, they started working on the Johnny Bear field, getting that kind of prepared for Little League as well. Right now, the guy that's putting the dugouts, completing the dugouts, the back, the, the back and the top on the dugouts, apparently when they sent them the material, they only sent them half of the, the material. So, we have one dugout completed and the other one's still open. He was able to, to get all the purling and everything else on there. The only thing that we're waiting on is the galvanized for the roof and, and the back.
Any questions regarding the Parks Department report? Nothing. Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Next under Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, is the City Secretary Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Well, you know it's that time again for elections, so we finally have our place on the ballot. With the mayor, we have Melissa Sullivan, Filipe Leal and Brandon Breones running. District Two ran unopposed with Johnny Rodriguez, and then District Four, we have Frank Nieto and James Douglas running. And the city will be contracting with the county for a joint election this year. In regards to utility billing, we had four residential and one commercial new services, and we had five residential disconnects for the month of February. Amy DeShawness is not here this evening, so she gave me her information for her event planning report. She did say that she is continuing to work on July Fourth event and working on Christmas displays for the downtown polls and a commercial tree for the next event that we have hosted at the end of the year, and she is working on a market days event for March to October. We did work with Sarah, or speak with Sarah today in regards to their market days event that they're, they're going to be hosting, so we, we have been in communication with them on that. And the Chamber is hosting the parade for the Bupana Festival in April this year, and the Chamber has asked if the city would like to sponsor a float in the parade and have council representative for the city, and there is a deadline for April fifteenth. We do have a line item in the agenda for you guys to consider that this evening, and I will let you know the ladies are kind of excited. They're looking at all kinds of decorations for, for this parade float that they're hoping that you guys will attend. For the court, we brought in, we saw one-hundred-and-thirty-nine defendants this last month with twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-seven net to the city, or collected in nineteen-thousand net to the city. The fire department reported that they had twenty-four calls. They used fifteen-thousand gallons and had an average of about six personnel responding to the calls.
Any questions from the council?
I have one concerning the elections. From what I understand, early voting this time is all going to happen in Karn City. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Karn County does not have enough machines this year. They were not, I guess some of them are out of order. She had just enough to be able to host a joint election with us, county and the ISD. And so, early election will be held at the Election Center in Karn City, and then Election Day will be here in this building.
And last year, were we able to do it here? They had an extra machine. Is that the way it worked or?
I did not host the event.
Oh, that's right.
I was prior to me being here, so I cannot confirm.
Does anybody recall if the early voting was here last year?
It was, Mayor, and we do have an agenda line item regarding this to, to amend the ordinance for this reason. There were some issues with the machines, I think, being recalibrated or something. This year, not all of them got done or something, so. And of course, as everybody's aware, we have a new elections administrator for the county, so she kind of walked into, I guess, the hornet's nest, and so, you know, this, this will help her out. We're good with being good neighbors.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Mallow. Appreciate it. Next up is Agenda Item Number Nine, City Manager Report. Current projects, future projects, current operations and/or future operations, and presentation of financials. Mr. Lynn?
Good evening, Council, Mayor, residents of Kennedy. Kind of let the team do most of the stuff on, we put on my city manager report tonight. Basically, that's pretty, going to be pretty scarce tonight. We have a lot going on in Kennedy. We're still waiting on the environmental review for the GLO project, so once we get that, we'll get it smooth to Tigers. Once the GLO approves that and no issue, the authority use grant funds, then we're really off and running at that point, that project. As you're aware with the line item tonight, we are looking at a totally different grant than that one. GLO was tied to Harvey. This other grant is tied to the COVID-19 pandemic that we just went through, and we're going to be looking, moving forward with that. It's got some of the same type of uses for the funds that the GLO and the CBPGs have. Most of the CBPG projects have the same type of use of funds regardless of who they come through, so. And we've got that going on there as well. Really, other than that, at this point in time, we are looking at bringing on one additional staff member. That would be of interest to the city as a whole. Mr. Albiar has done a really good job for us as code compliance since he returned back to the city, but the, the job is very cumbersome. The City of Kennedy has been left to go for far too long, and so we're bringing on another code person to work with Mr. Albiar side by side as an equal. So, once we get that hiring process wrapped up, the residents will now have two code people to deal with in the town, which will enable us to get more code done, taken care of, and get the city cleaned up a little faster and bring it to where we need to bring it. So, just wanted to let you guys know that we're moving in that direction as well. So, if there's any questions you guys have about anything that's not on the agenda already, feel free to ask.
Any questions from the council?
Mr. Lynn, I do have a question. There are several people in the audience tonight that are interested in the conveyance of city property to the Santa Ana.
It's my agenda, Mayor.
Which item?
It's the executive session.
Well, can we speak about it here as well?
No, sir. Not until we talk as a group. Then when we come back and talk about it, I'll be one. There are things that have to be said to the council first.
Okay.
But once we do.
Discuss it afterwards.
But once we do come back into open session, all the rules apply. Once you open it back up and the council goes through the first thing, anybody who wishes to speak on that line item will have an opportunity to speak on that line item in the open session. But until we talk about what we need to talk about, it's not prudent to do it.
Okay. We'll discuss it later in the meeting, then.
Very good.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynn? If not, you'd like to continue with financials?
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so, we had an issue back in February where we got a letter and we were contractually obligated to accept rates for the trash, and we took a higher fee, and the council elected to not pass that on to the residents of the City of Kennedy. And I was asked to come through some numbers, so I did. So, what we're looking at, pardon me, so, at the original price before the price went up, the City of Kennedy paid roughly right around five-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars a year for trash service. That's what we wrote approximate checks to waste connections for. With the price increase, that number goes up to six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars, so the difference is about thirty-six-thousand dollars a year, pardon me, increase in expenditures that we incurred as a municipality. So, it's kind of important to keep in mind, we incurred thirty-six-thousand dollars in worth of expenditures. Prior to that rate going up, the City of Kennedy brought in six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars a year with our pass-through to the customer. So, when we pass it to the customer, total revenue is six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars. So, that more than offsets the, more than offset the cost of our expenditures by about eighty-three-thousand dollars, so the net to the city was about eighty-three-thousand dollars. Because the city did not raise the rates, what we're looking at is now, with the rates being the same, we still only get six-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars, or we're paying out six-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars. So, that's a difference of around thirty-seven-thousand dollars worth of revenue that is potentially lost that we don't get, and that was the number you guys were looking forward to. You wanted me to come up with, with that. And just to give you an idea, our gross profit margin with the old rate and our rate that we passed through to the residents was twelve-point-two percent. Our gross profit margin as of today is six-point-nine-six percent, so that's a difference of five-point-three-one percent we've lost by not passing it through to the residents. So, those are the numbers you asked me to put together for you so you would have an idea, so. I wanted to go ahead and give that to you tonight. If you'll take a look at your financials, on the, on the right-hand side, the left-hand side of financials, you'll see we'll start with our available liquidity. The general fund's still about two-point-nine-eight, hotel motel taxes, one-point-oh-two-six, water and sewer funds at eight-hundred-and-fifty-three, and the paid fund's still two-point-four-four-nine, giving us about seven-point-three-one-nine in our tax pool account. At the construction of these financials, we had two-point-seven million dollars in the bank in cash. It gave us a total liquidity of ten-point-oh-eight million dollars, which is good for about seven-point-four-three months' worth of expenditures. So, we're in very good financial shape on that part. The general fund took in about eight-hundred-thousand dollars last month. So, we're year-to-date about three-point-seven million dollars for the year. Our benchmark number is forty-one-point-six-seven percent. We hit forty-seven-point-three-two percent. Since it's a revenue, the higher number's better, means we took in more than what we projected. We're still, this is through February's numbers, so it's still the height of taking in tax dollars, so we're still good there. We spent five-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand dollars. Year-to-date, we have about two-point-six-nine million that we spent. Again, the number we're benchmarking to is forty-one-point-eight-seven. We spent about thirty-four-point-oh-five percent of our budget, so that's a good number. It's lower than what we're benchmarking, means we're spending less than what we budgeted. So, we're outperforming our budget on the general fund side. The Water and Sewer Department took in six-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand. Their year-to-date number is three-point-one-eight-nine million. We're looking at about thirty-eight-point-two-four percent versus forty-one-point-six-seven. They're, they're underperforming their revenues just a little bit, which is going to start being expected, especially with the, the higher rate increase that we have from waste connections. We're going to start seeing that number not matching up. We took in, they spent four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars. It's two-point-five million for the year. That's about thirty-point-two-six percent versus forty-one-point-six-seven. So, even though the water and sewer revenues lagging behind the budget, they're way outperforming the budget on expenditures, so it kind of makes it up. And so, just to give y'all a, a good idea of where we are, total for the city, we're about one-point-seven up right now. So, we're in real good financial shape as municipality goes. I'd also like to add that the, Mr. Arm will finish the city's audit, the onsite portion of it, so he'll go back, he's gone back to his office, and whenever he gets, gets everything written up and everything, he'll get with me, he'll send me a copy. We'll go over it, and then we'll schedule him to come in and present it to the council. So, we're looking sometime in May for that. So, any questions about the financials?
Any questions from council regarding financials? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
This brings us to Agenda Item Number Ten, Consent Agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second, and affirmation majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item Eight, Consideration and Approval of Regular City Council Meeting Minutes of February eighth, twenty-twenty-two, Special City Council Meeting Minutes of February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and Workshop City Council Meeting Minutes of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Item B, Consideration and Approval on Financials. I would entertain a motion at this point on Item Number Ten, Consent Agenda, A and B.
I'll make the motion, but I, I wasn't here for that workshop, so. Did y'all have any? Man, I don't mind. I just didn't, I don't want to approve, I don't want to give a motion for something that I was looking for.
Sager, do you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve Line Item A, Consideration and Approval of Regular City Council Meeting Minutes of February the eighth, twenty-twenty-two, with the Special City Council Meeting Minutes of February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and the Workshop City Council Meeting Minutes of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
We have a motion from Councilmember Schultz. Is there a second?
Can we do that all in one, Item A and B?
Oh, yes. Could you amend your motion to say A and B?
Yes, I'd like to amend my motion to say Items A and B.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Schultz and a second from Councilmember Sykes. Ms. Mallow, should we call the roll? Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to change the order in the agenda just slightly this evening. We're going to move item number 22 up in the agenda. Turn to item 22. Consideration and possible action to vacate and replat in the Kennedy addition lots 1, 2, and lot 3, block 44, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and part of lot 5, block 55, together with a part or portion of Aranza Street between block 44 and block 55 in the City of Kennedy as shown on the plat record in Cabinet A, page 149 of the plat records of Karnes County, Texas. Mr. Albiario, have a presentation?
In y'all's packet, in y'all's council packet, we have a vacate replat that we presented to the P&amp;Z. Tonight, we welcome P&amp;Z Chairman Ms. Dubnik and Representative from the Baptist Church, Mr. Bobby Alexander. If we have any additional questions that y'all need to ask, this is in y'all's packet, the vacate replat that y'all have in y'all's packet. Basically, this is a project that has been going on for a couple of years now. We're trying to close it. We did present this plat to the P&amp;Z last Thursday. P&amp;Z approved the plat, vacate and replat. If you have any questions, basically, if you're looking at the map, we're looking at closing a portion of Aranza Street. We're looking at closing the, leave it open, the south portion and closing the north, the south portion and closing the north portion of Aranza Street. The Baptist Church has accomplished, has basically bought a lot of property there, and basically what they're doing, they're making it into one property. Of course, the Baptist Church is already existing, it's already there, and if you look at your map, it's kind of like an L-shaped property. And so what they're doing is they're making it all one big property. As we presented to the planning building commission, all building setbacks are all correct. So we did present it to P&amp;Z, and it was approved. Now we're presenting it to city council for final approval. If we have any questions, we do have, again, Mr. Alexander, who is representing the Baptist Church here, and Ms. Dubnik, who is our planning and zoning chair. So anybody have any questions regarding the vacate replat?
Any questions from the council?
That was approved by P&amp;Z.
Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, is there a motion related to agenda item number 22?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 22.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Albiario.
Thank you all very, very much. My happy Baptist Church, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, for being here. All have a good evening. So resuming where we were initially in the agenda, that brings us to agenda item number 11. Consideration and possible action to reappoint Lucille Matthews and Gerardo Salas to the City of Kennedy Parks and Recreation Board for a two-year term beginning March 1, 2022 to February 28, 2024. Mr. Lynn, you have a presentation?
The, Ms. Matthews and Mr. Salas's terms have expired on the Parks and Rec Board, so they have sent us letters expressing an interest among wish to continue serving as volunteers on that board. So that's just a matter of just reappointing them for another two-year term on that board.
Any questions or discussion from the council? If not, there is there a motion related to agenda item number 11?
I'll make a motion to approve item number 11.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Seines and a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number 12. Consideration and possible action for the City of Kennedy to participate in the 22, 2022 Blue Mountain Days Parade to be held on Saturday, April 23, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. Mr. Lynn?
I'm going to actually defer the floor to Ms. Mous, because she had more to do with this than I did.
Okay. Ms. Mous?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, the Blue Mountain Days Parade was going to be held in April, and the chamber was asking if the city would like to host a float. And this attached with this item at 12 is the application for it. And our deadline to submit is April 15, so we wanted to ask if you were available and if this is something that you would like to do.
Hey, I would personally, I would like to be part of the parade, but I've offered my services as a volunteer, so I'm not sure if I might be needed elsewhere at this point. Joe Lynn, do you have any information on that? Do you think at this point I would be okay if we had a?
I think so.
A city float in the parade?
Yeah, I think during that first hour, I mean, I know Chris will be tied up, but I think anybody else that wants to participate, you have plenty of time. I wouldn't really need a whole lot of volunteers until later in the afternoon.
Okay. How do y'all feel? I mean, I would be glad to offer up my pickup truck. Would we like to ride together as one group in the parade?
We're actually looking at putting together a parade float.
Oh, well, that would be even better.
Something that we can have continuously.
I'm all in favor of it. I love a parade, so.
They're all in, so.
I think it's a great idea.
It sounds like we're all in favor of it, so let's, yeah, let's move that forward.
Need a motion, Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion related to agenda item number 12? I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 12.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Parker, a second from Councilmember Seines. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda item number 13. Consideration of possible action in regard to partnering with the San Antonio Food Bank pertaining to implementing a quarterly food distribution pantry within the municipal limits. Mr. Lynn?
So when we had our water shut down with the R O plant that, and the water pressure dropped and issued a full water notice, the San Antonio Food Bank reached out to Councilman Douglas, wanting to help us actively help figure out the water at the time we didn't, because we had things under control, news coming back online. It was a very nice gesture, and I was very touched by it. But Councilman Douglas, a three-way, myself onto the phone conversation, began talking about need. Currently, right now, there is a food distribution once a month at the Karnes County Barn where people can go get, who are in need, supplement food, whatever it might be. And so we began, the three of us began talking, and Councilman Douglas had the idea, hey, why don't we come up with, trying to see if we can do something maybe within the city, maybe once a quarter. So that's where this idea comes from, is this conversation. Councilman Douglas, I think, coming out here, filling up the Rockin' Water with arms and struggling from here.
Basically, the county's currently paying for a food distribution service once a month. Anybody that lives in the county is able to participate. It's a great service. The problem with that is that sometimes it's still not enough for some folks. And obviously budgets and costs come into play, but I had the idea that if we could do something as a city to help supplement that by possibly starting a quarterly distribution for our residents. And if it works out, great, we grow from there, you know, whatever we're allowed in the budget. You know, I just feel like there's so many people that live in Kennedy that don't have vehicles. They have to get a ride to go to the doctor, to go to the food bank distribution next to the hospital. They're getting rides all the time. So many people walk to school, they walk to the store. If there's something that we could do to help that, I think we should. I don't know what the numbers are, what the cost would be. I think we need to get Mario down here. He, when we talked to Mario on the phone, I think he probably would have showed up the next day, you know, with a full presentation ready to go. He's just, he's a great guy. He works very well with the county, and Shelby knows. He's just, he's eager to help and wants to help any way he can. And so I think if there's a way for us as a city to help supplement, you know, what's already going on in the county, I mean, I think it's a great thing for the residents.
And the idea would be to schedule it about two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to interfere with, you know, the regular distribution, because, you know, a lot of our residents are still going to go to that as well. You know, we can stagger it on a different day. Currently, it's the first Monday of every month. So, you know, and people that go regularly know, we start, I took a group of kids back in February, and just this past Monday, we had some FFA students go and help, and so it's, volunteers are always needed too at the food bank distribution. Just throwing that out there. But, you know, I think if there's something we can do, I think it would be really helping out the citizens the whole lot.
Is this, this is only going to be for the citizens of Kennedy?
Correct. Is there a way, an idea of how we're going to determine who's from here and who's not?
Water bill. They can bring a water bill if they have or something, figure something out. I figured, I thought, you know, he mentions, you know, he mentioned quarterly and then doing it a different day. So what I would perceive or envision is doing it like on Saturday, when most people aren't working. That way, we're in school, that way, we're back to buck. We have, we have ample facilities here in the City of Kennedy. We have this wonderful auditorium that we could line it up around the edges once, once a month, until we actually begin, you know, busting out walls and putting up beams and everything. We have our convention center area, there has that big huge room. I mean, we've got some space that we could use for this. And I thought it was just a great idea. I think it takes things to another level for us as a, as an organization in helping our residents out. Times are getting harder and harder and harder with everything. I mean, gas is coming up to $4 a gallon here real soon, and, you know, people are going to be making some hard decisions. Do I buy the gallon of milk, or do I put the, you know, $4 in my car so I can get to work? So I think this is a good way that we as a municipality can help out. I group this whole heartedly. Going into budget season, if you guys as a council wanted to jump on board this, I would ensure there was money in the budget for this program.
How does the rest of the council feel? I'm all in favor of it. I think it'd be a great service. I guess what we're here for is to provide service to the community. It's a great thing. Do we need a action item on this, or is it more for discussion?
Well, we can do use it either more for discussion just like that, but if we do want to move forward officially, then we are going to need to take action as a group to establish the fact that we are going to move forward officially.
So now would be a good time to gather the facts and figures, the associated costs, the nuts and bolts of how it will all work before we get into the budget cycle?
Right. So if we want to do that, before we make a hard decision, a hard yes or a hard no, then kind of the motion would kind of be to direct the city manager to go ahead and gather all the background data, facts and figures, and bring them back to council at a later date for a final determination.
Is there a motion along those lines?
Mr. Mayor, may I add?
Yes, Mr. Dubnik, yes.
I want to commend Councilman Douglas and Mr. Lynn for thinking about this. The Karnes County spends $30,000 a year on doing this for one month. Every quarter, the food bank, you might say, does vacate, so it gives us, sometimes we get a free distribution, extra distribution. But what, what I'm glad to see y'all are doing is, and I would hope y'all would think about this, is creating a pantry where you could have a location. Of course, it's costly to set up, because you have to have freezers, you have to have certain, certain things you have to do to make it a pantry. But the distribution we get, everybody just comes to the line, initial people sometimes take stuff they don't want. And there are some people that come there and pick up for other people, and then make sure they go back and do the commuting and distribute. And there's a lot of people from Kennedy that do that. But what needs to happen is, in some ways in the future, is that if you can create a pantry, you can, and with the coolers and everything, you can get a better quality of food. And if you go to the New Braunfels Food Bank there, they have it set up like a store, and you shop on points. And the client works in with the golf, with the, like going to a grocery store, and they just take what they want. They only can take so much of each thing, but they take what they want, as well as there to kind of help to how to prepare the stuff and to get more out of it. But if y'all ever decide to do anything, please consider doing a pantry, because that's what Karnes County needs. Of course, it would have to be for everybody in the county. There are several little pantries that have been, been in the county, but even if you use them for the citizens of Kennedy, it wouldn't really matter, but at least they can come in and be more selective for what they can, they can take and use and not go to waste. You get a better quality of food also, the pantry's a lot cheaper than what you would do, because you only replace what you take, what you, what you would use. So it'd be a lot cheaper. But thank y'all for, Mr. Lynn, thank you, and James, thank you for what y'all are doing, because I think it's, you'd be surprised, we service 120 families, sometimes 180 families that come through. And there are some people who say that if, believe it or not, if we didn't do this once a month, they have nothing to eat. So this is a need for Karnes County, it's a need for the cities, and I thank y'all.
Shelby, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Would it be beneficial right away to start a non-perishable pantry somewhere where it's open? I know we have one here at the Christian Center, but if there was another location for non-perishables?
Yes, I think so. I think it'd be a good idea to start. But a pantry is really needed in this, in this community.
And then one other thing, your pantry you were talking about in New Braunfels, is that a?
It's a San Antonio food bank.
A position, but is that something where there's, it's opened every day?
Every day, it's like a grocery store.
Is it a volunteer person? It's a paid position? I mean?
Yeah, they have a, they have, it's food bank fully staffed by the food bank, it's paid. They provide several other services there. You can register to vote there, you can, they help you with preparation, they have a lot of services they offer. The food bank offers a lot of services, not just food, but they offer a lot of services to the communities. And I wish we were, sometimes could get more of that down here, it would really, it would help the communities. But they, they even grow some stuff there at the food bank. They have these big tanks set up and planters, and they grow the fresh vegetables, and they put them back into the thing, and they rotate them out, so it's really a good.
I think it's going to be needed sooner than we think.
But it's, I've got, you know, and James and Mr. Lynn, I'll be glad to help y'all, if y'all start and decide to do something, let me know, I'll be glad to help, because it's something we need in Kennedy.
It's a great idea.
Shelby, the food bank in, in New Braunfels, is it staffed by city staff or by food bank staff?
It's food bank staff.
So what, so the city's end of it would be just providing a facility for it?
You'd have to, well, no, but they, you'd have to have your own staff for here. But, but you wouldn't have to have it open every day. You can have it like on a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or?
A scaled-down version.
Yeah, a scaled-down version, where people get a schedule, and like Mr. Lynn says, you have a water bill. You know, you come in and, and Bobby and Mario, I know, will be able to help with some other, other, he has some good ideas. Some have formed a 501(c)(3), and they can go into like, I think, I hope I'm saying this right, they can maybe go into HEB, and they rotate some stock, they can get stuff taken there. They can get stuff taken there, Walmart, some places like that, that, that work with the food bank.
Perhaps it might be a good idea to invite Mario to give his presentation at a future meeting.
I also would encourage you as a council to go one day to San Antonio, to the food bank and tour with their facilities. And you can see the services that they offer and, and how they actually operate the food bank. You know, they take care of all of South Texas. And with the showbar that we have, we would have a showbar. And I'm gonna tell you what, the kids from Kennedy High School, it's been amazing. And since we asked for help because we're always short staffed. And those kids came out and they worked and they worked. And they, I think they learned a lot of teamwork and they learned a lot about what goes on in our community. And I wanna commend the school and James, you bring them out there a lot. And all the schools are starting to pitch in. But you will have to, you know, I'll be glad to help y'all. We'd be very excited to do something here. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Is there a motion in regard to agenda item number 13?
I'll make a motion to direct city manager Lynn to collect all of the necessary data, financials, and set up a meeting with Mario regarding agenda item 13.
A motion from Councilmember, sent a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Mous, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All present vote in favor, motion carried. This brings us to agenda item number 14. Consideration of possible action in regard to selecting a convention center design and authorizing the city manager to proceed with the design and construction process. Mr. Lynn?
All right. It's election time. Mark Magnus, this is what you guys have been waiting for. City of Kennedy Convention Center. We're really moving forward. So you have in front of you the two options, the two renderings from the architects that Mr. Burger brought up. I just wrote on top of them. They say the same thing at the very bottom. I just put them on top so everyone can see a little bit better which one was which option A or option B. So all you guys need to do is decide which option you would like to move towards and then just make your motion and that. And I'll get Mr. Burger and have him start drawing it up and moving forward.
At the recent workshop, there seemed to be consensus for option B, is that correct? Of course, we were absent two council members. So James, have you had a chance to look it over?
Well, I'm glad you said option B. That's the one I was most drawn to. I do have a question though. I know, you know, adding the interior walls, the exterior walls, are those, those are gonna stay brick, right? Like we're gonna retain as much originality as possible?
Yes, that's what was talked about.
There was, when I looked at the pictures, it was hard to tell on some of them. Granted, it was computer drawings, but that was just, that was one of my concerns and concerns of many others. And are these, are these walls, are these gonna be permanent walls or temporary walls?
No, they'll be permanent walls.
Yeah, sorry you missed the workshop. Mr. Burger gave a great presentation. But yeah, the idea is to maintain as much of the historical character and integrity of the building as possible, but also dressing it up quite a bit. You sound like putting a polished surface on the floors to make it a little chitier and just more presentable. And everything will just be kind of cleaned up. But it's gonna be a porch around the backside of the main hall, the landscaped area off the back that we talked about at the first workshop, which would be great for special event photographs, wedding photographs, that kind of thing. So I'm really impressed with Mr. Burger's design to this point. It looks, both options look very good to me. But it did seem like just about everybody was leaning towards option B during the last workshop.
Yeah. Option B did have the nicer entryway.
I did include thumbnail prints or fingerprints of the pictures in the workshop minutes if you needed to refer back to them.
Yes, that's all that. Thank you for including those. Any questions or discussion?
I do, I do have a question. There's been some concern and some of the people are here this evening that are not in favor of these designs. I'm wondering, is this something that we need to move forward with right away or can we have another workshop? There's three of the ladies are sitting here now that are not, you know, not happy with the design plans, thinking that the new smaller areas on the right, as you come in, are not necessary and take away from the usefulness of the center itself. I'm just wondering, is there, should we move forward now or do we have another workshop and let up? You know, we had two people at the meeting and.
Which, which smaller areas are you referring to, the restrooms or?
I'm gonna call that Hall Two, Hall Two and Hall Three and the entry.
Basically where the, when you walk in, where the, the first room you walk into, where the bar is and the initial dining space.
Yeah. So if you could just explain again how that's gonna work since they're here now, we can explain that.
So, so I'm having a hard time.
This area here.
That's not the one we're referring to.
Yeah, yeah. I like this one. I like this one, but you know, whatever. It, these areas here, why is this being broke up? Which I understand completely why, but some people are not in favor of that.
That's a meeting room there and that's a meeting room there and that's a meeting room there.
Jimmy, totally understands.
And of course you have to have a hallway to get to the meeting room.
Absolutely understand that.
We gotta have a way to get out of the kitchen.
I completely understand that. I understand all of that.
That's why this is.
So with this being said, in Hall Number Two, Mr. Baker, do you remember how many people can, there can be three separate events going on at one time? The event in the large area was, if I'm not mistaken, how many people are in that one? In the large area, which would be the main hall? Do you remember again?
I wish I had my notes with me. I don't, I don't recall. It seems like the architect, they had a formula that used a number of square feet per person. Was it 10, Mr. Lynn? Approximately?
Do you remember how many can be in that room at one time?
I believe the overall capacity for the building is about 500 or 600 people that can be going on at one time.
I wanna say it was 300. For some reason, 300 is stuck in my head in that one. And then in the larger, on the right hand side, or excuse me, on the left hand side, was as many as 50, wasn't it? And then 25 in the smaller?
If we're using the 10 square foot per person rule, then we're looking at, I guess, about 400 for the main hall. Seems a little high though. 190 for Hall Two and 85 for Hall Three. But that, like I said, that's probably just rough figures. But I think as somebody who's host, I was a president of the South Texas Press Association. We had annual conventions. And it was very useful for conventions to have three separate spaces where you could have three simultaneous events. And people could choose which of those three events to attend, but they call them breakout sessions. So if you did host a convention on a small scale like that for a small organization, that's one of the things I liked about this design was you would have that functionality. You'd be able to split up and divide up into three separate, for the most part, soundproof spaces.
Yes.
So that you could hear different presentations on different topics. And that's one of our goals, I believe, as Mr. Lynn said, is to make this a functional facility that could attract meetings or special events of all kinds and be multifunctional in that regard. So I think that was the idea behind dividing up the, the other spaces that are outside of the main hall. Yes, Jill Lynn?
I would think that if you're gonna call it a convention center, you're gonna use funds. I may be wrong in saying this, but I think you need to have multiple spaces in order to call it a convention center and use those funds. You can have more than one event there. I could be wrong, but.
All right, we have to be able to host more than one event.
To me, this is what makes it unique in Carons County. Most of our event facilities aren't just one single open space.
For civic centers.
Yes. And, and, and this is unique in that regard. It can draw events that are looking for a way to kind of split up and divide up. But the main hall is still rather large. Like we said at the workshop, it's twice the capacity of this room. Is that, is that right, Jill Lynn? So we're not giving up a lot. And because of the design, the initial design of the building and the multi-levels, it would be difficult to kind of configure it either other way. So I, if there's someone here that would like to speak about their opinions or offer alternatives, now is a good time.
Now is a really good time.
Before we move forward.
Yeah. And I also wanna say on the entry area, I should first come in under the covered patio area, under the covered carport area. That entry area, we also discussed at that meeting that the office was there that would be the greeter meter office personnel. But this room was also large enough to host something if need be. That, that room was big enough to be like a gathering lobby for pre-weddings or things of that nature, pre-meetings. It's big enough that people can mull around and visit and there could be tables set up, things of that nature. That's also a usable space. Even though that's not what it looks like now, this wide open, two separate spaces, but not really separate because you can't hold a meeting in that area, the old dining area, and have a wedding reception going on down below because it's so loud. You can't hear anything in the dining area. So with these separate spaces being built, they're gonna have soundproof walls and ceilings so that you're not gonna be interrupted. Your events will not be interrupted. You could host three at the same time and one even have a music venue and it's not gonna be interrupting the other meeting areas. So I don't know if that makes any more sense. And no, it's not gonna look exactly like it does right now. But the, the right side, the larger side, where the musical events and stuff is gonna be lovely, just prettier. But those exterior brick walls are gonna be showing the windows here on this side also that face the now parking lot where you used to enter in. It's gonna be the same thing. Those beautiful exterior original brick walls are gonna be exposed. They're not gonna be covered up. It's just gonna be the new walls, if that makes better sense.
I have a, I have a quick question. Let's say we picked one of these options. Is the way it looks, is that like set in stone or can some modifications be made? The reason I ask is because when I, and both options are pretty much similar. But looking at the layout, and again, I wasn't here for the workshop, I'm sorry. The bride room is directly next to the men's restrooms?
That was the rest in the workshop.
My thought, okay. Because I was like, you know, if you went with option B, for example, the office in the very front entryway, just flip those restrooms, put women's next to the office, turn that into a bride room right next to the restroom. You know, it would make sense to me.
Did they talk about flipping the office?
But.
Yeah, we could just, we could just have Mr. Burger, when he draws it up, just flip the bathrooms. Move the men's room over to where the women's are, move the women's over to the men's.
Because I'm thinking like, okay, if, without talking, I'm not a wedding planner. I wish, I wish Shannon were here.
Shannon was here.
I'm sure she was here to work.
Yes, she was here.
If I were a bride, I don't know if I'd wanna walk out of a bride room right into an open room. I think it makes a little more sense, you know, to come down the hallway and then walk out. I don't know. I'm just brainstorming. But both options are pretty similar. But if we went, for example, with option B, are we able to make slight changes like that with Mr. Burger? Or is this set?
Yeah, he would, he would be able to do it. All we would need to do is just kind of look at it and decide what we wanted to do there within the, the basic plans he has and then move forward with that. Whatever he designs, just tell him, say, hey, look, we designed it. Flip the bathroom so that the women's bathroom is by the bride's room. Can you put a door from the bride's room into the bathroom so they can walk that way rather than just walking out?
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, I can, I can do that. I can call him and ask him to do that. That's not a big deal.
And the other question I had is neither option had an outdoor wedding venue space. Is that something that can be added? Is that within the budget?
That is the green area. Right. So it doesn't show it on this, okay? But when you look at the pictures and all that, you see the off part where it has kind of like the gazebo and all that. That's that area that Mrs. Ash recommended that we put in where people go take pictures where they could hold outdoor weddings over there and that kind of thing.
So there would be like a permanent area?
It's like, it's like a mini park.
Right.
James, when you look at the design and you're talking about bride, when you say bride room, you mean like a room where the brides can dress, a dressing room?
I saw that space. I just, it was hard, it was hard to tell on, on these, like if there was a. What comes to mind every time I think about outdoor wedding space is the building in Nursery, right outside of Victoria. It's, has like a perfect outdoor wedding space. It's not too big, it's not too small. I mean, it's just perfect. And then right into the receptional. You know, it's just a, and I mean, it's a simple outdoor space.
Yeah.
That you can put chairs out and decorate however you want to, you know. But it's, I don't know if it's, I haven't been there in a while. I don't remember if it's just concrete or if there's tile on top, but.
There's tile on top.
Is, yeah. I mean, it's, it's nothing super fancy, but it's a great space that's permanent for an outdoor wedding. Or a photo backdrop or whatever. But yeah, it was, it was just hard to tell on, on the drawings if we had, if there was something like that in the plans.
Now, if you go back to the bride room, which, which room were you anticipating being used for that on option B? You're talking about the office?
Yeah, so on option B, there's two offices.
Okay.
There's one on the far left side, you know, back next to the freezer, storage, and then another storage. And then the very front, there's another office.
On option B, that office is not going to be there. That office is going to be turned into extra storage.
Which, the large one by the entryway?
No, the small one over by the kitchen area and storage and behind the men's bathroom, that's not gonna be an office. Nobody wants to be, be back there in the late.
Do we, do we, do we need an office?
Manager.
Well, the discussion was that that would be taken out and more storage. And that was okay.
That's why the office is up front is for our person to be up front.
Yes.
And then whoever leases up the kitchen would then use the office back there. So they had an office to get to the kitchen.
Your designer.
That's okay. Well, I have to talk to them about this other.
Yeah, because we had discussed that the office wasn't necessary. We needed more storage.
I thought we discussed it was in the storage.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna actually have an outdoor storage building to, to house everything in. It's not gonna be in there and that.
And we decided that what we really needed was more storage inside because that's a long way for women to go packing tables and chairs from the storage room way outside, especially if it's raining or whatever. It's a long way for us women to be packing tables and chairs and then to clean up the mess and get them back out there. So if we had more storage inside, oh, it happens. I've done enough weddings, it happens. So, but it's, it's another discussion, but it makes more sense to have more storage.
Or we could just put tables and chairs in the back storage room. That back storage room is big enough to do that.
Kind of what we did when we opened up the stores and we were looking. We were looking to see what's going on in there and how many tables and chairs can we fit? And, you know, you don't want this in the new beautiful facility. You don't want 300 chairs hanging around all the time, you know. We don't want that. So more storage made more sense than an office. But maybe we can squeeze an office.
We can, we can turn that, that storage right now is just being taken up with what was there. Okay? At the end of the day, you could, well, it's just smallware. So you can move all that smallwares out into an outdoor storage building and that could be taken care of. And then that takes care of all the shelving that's in there and all the smallwares and all that broken equipment that's back there is gonna go away. And then that big storage room actually frees up.
What's TLT? Is that another bathroom? Is that another bathroom?
That is, that is, right. That's a private bathroom for the restaurant workers to use.
See, I was thinking most weddings, they would rent the whole facility. And you could use Hall Three as the bride room. And that, that would have a lot more space than the bride room that's listed here on the plat or the office. But I guess there is a possibility there might be a smaller scale wedding happening simultaneously with another event. It's would be good to be prepared for either instance.
Well, right, it is. And, you know, even if that place there, they could, even if they had a wedding and they rented the main, the main room, if this Hall Three was available, they could still just rent the two rooms. And you still have Hall Two available for another venue to go on. So there's a lot of, the possibilities are really almost infinite if we, you know, if we go down with what can be done. I think the design is great. I just came back, I will, I will say this. The city managers meet for a mini-conference in February every year. They used to meet in Salado. And Salado had I-35 being all tore up and everything and that. Granbury just built their conference center. And the first year was in 2016. And that conference center, from what I've seen from Mr. Berger's designs in this, that conference center up in Granbury gets a lot of regalement from city managers. This we're looking at is going to put that one to shame on the inside. It really is. It's two big rooms is all that conference center is with four movable partitions that they can cut into four smaller rooms. That's all they have. And the one room we were in only holds about 150 people. And the other room we always use for lunch, which holds 150 people. So they can only put 300 in that. And it's premium, premium pricing for that because it's right on like Granbury. What we're looking at here in Kennedy by far dwarfs that and is going to be much more beautiful. I mean, from what I saw, the photos from Mr. Berger, my jaw hit the floor. I was astounded at how beautiful it looks and how it kept with the original charm and charisma, you know, of the building and the areas that he did. He has met every requirement that we have asked of him each and every time we've talked to him. And, and he's doing a great job for us.
I agree. I was very impressed, but barely not everybody feels that way. Is there someone here that would like to speak about the design before we?
No, I'm, I'm, I did not come to that. I did not know what it was. I think it's very odd since there are about five of us that have been working on this venue for years and we have not been asked any questions. It is a beautiful building and I, I see some things in it that aren't very easy for us to see, let's put it that way. You don't want to take away from anything of the beauty of the building. The bill, those cement wall or brick walls, they're beautiful, beautiful for this part of the, I don't, and, you know, it's not very easy for us to see. I guess that's the, if B is, I'd just like to see it better and like for him to explain it better to some of us that have been involved for years and years and years. The other thing is I see no reason to have an office out there at all. That person's going to be sitting there day after day after day, you know?
Mr. Lynn, would there be a way to put the, there's a beautiful set of illustrations that came with this that the public hasn't really had access to. Is there a way we could put that on the city's website so people could browse it?
These same photos?
Yes.
The same photos?
Yeah, well, Ms. Miles will take a look and see how, if she can get that done. If not, we'll get with Mr. Drew and see if we can make it happen. Maybe we'll create a tab or something just for that so that people can go and take a look at it and see as well.
Yeah, I think...
I believe it was on that pull-down screen at the meeting and it was larger than life. It was beautiful. And he answered question after question after question. I mean, he, we had a gazillion questions.
I can't say that I'm against number B at all. I can't say I'm for it or I'm against it. I would just like to see, I'd just like to see the bigger portion of it where we could see everything and not take away from the facade of the building. I even like the little...
And the facade is not being changed at all. It's going to be shored up because there's a few weak spots on the backside where the brush is. Would that be the west side? But that's not going to be changed. It's just going to be shored up, the cement and what have you.
I love your idea of an outside venue also, I think, with 15, well, you have 15 acres or whatever it is.
There's 15 acres out there. They're not going to do the whole 15 acres.
Yeah, right. But I mean, that's, that's the name of the game now.
And Ferris, what do you think of this? Did you understand this? This is not, you can't really see that either, but the carport, like you won't be entering through this door anymore, that big blank ugly area. I mean, it's nothing ugly, but that's not very attractive for nice things. So if you come here, this is the opened up patio with the fence, the little brick wall. And it's got like fencing or something around it, you know, and it's open. It's open out there and there's just a bunch of tables out there.
So we can light our limousine through there?
Absolutely you can.
If it's raining, you can get out.
And it can be a super heavy Hummer limousine going up under there, completely covered, but lovely with the ranch style beams and just covered. Nothing crazy insane. It's just going to be like a ranch style entrance to get in. But that's going to help you let the bride out and her party or the groom's.
Or guests, anybody.
Guests, anybody. It's pouring rain, husband goes out, gets the car, comes around, wife gets in, you know? I think that really changed the whole look of the place. It made it really lovely and it's not changing the facade. We're just using a space that's already there that's useless.
Exactly.
And I think a picture's worth a thousand words. If we could get those beautiful renderings online so that the public could access them, they might change their minds about...
Maybe they can zoom in and look around. This little area too, if you see this walk area back here, this is against that wall and it's just that, it's just a plain Jane's got a rusty old pipe rail on it. But this is, I don't know if you remember that little spot outside, you can see through the windows, it's got a fire pit and some seating. This is going to be made really nice for people that want to go take a break outside.
No, I'm not saying I'm against it at all. I just can't, I can't see it.
It's hard to picture it.
It's hard to picture it very well. And this is the first time I've heard you mention an outside venue also, which is beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. And tell me your main things about having an office there? For somebody to sit every day?
I don't really know.
You've got to have an office. That's imperative because you're going to be taking reservations. There's going to be transactions going. You've got to have a place to do your bookwork and that kind of thing. So you have to have an office for that kind of stuff to keep all your, you know, stuff for your registers and papers and things of that nature as well. So, so the office is imperative to be there.
Mr. Lynn, does it necessarily have to be staffed full-time, does it?
Well, the convention center will be staffed full-time. It's, it's, in this next budget cycle, it will be its own department beginning in October 1st. It'll have its own director and its own staff. And we're moving in that direction with it so that we can get everything set up, so...
So there would be a city employee in that office Monday through Friday, H5?
There would be a city employee there, yes. Because again, you've got to have somebody to answer the phones if someone's calling wanting to rent the venue and that. Now, how many people do we have there? Well, we watch our labor, we take care of that and we write, write the schedule in such a way. In the beginning, not hardly very many people at all, one, maybe two people max. But as it begins to take off and you begin getting bookings and the bookings continue and continue and continue, you're going to have to have a staff of people of three or four max to run, to run the oversight of that. It's not kitchen help, so, yeah.
Okay, answer another question. You know, where the pretty, the building where we all had something, okay? And you have the brick up there, are you taking away, you're lowering all of those ceilings or what?
The ceilings are staying pretty much the same. I think he mentioned some lighting changes, but for the most part...
He did mention, he did mention prettying up those metal beams because right now it's exposed ugly wiring and stuff. It's not very attractive, but they're not covering those beams.
That's part of the character and historical integrity. The ceiling's going to remain basically the same. You have the original windows with natural light flowing into every space in the facility, which I love. And the stone walls, all that's going to remain.
I was at the first meeting and I talked to him. He did, did a very good job. I'd just like to see a bigger room where we could see what's going on.
Sure.
We'll work on getting those online so you can take a look. They're beautiful illustrations.
They'll be part of the workshop packet under the transparency tab for agendas and minutes. It'll be part of the packet. If you click on the packet link, it'll be there.
Thank you. These pictures? One other thing I'd like to bring up too. There was, there was some discussion on not having accessibility to, being privy to the workshop meeting. So how can we make that more, I know it was posted ahead of time that we were having a workshop meeting. Many people, you know, don't come down here. So how can we get that word out better?
I thought that's what our new site's going to do.
It's posted on Savvy Citizen.
Yeah, but it's too late for that workshop that everybody missed. So, you know, Savvy Citizen, was it on Savvy Citizen too?
There's a calendar on the city website. Then it's also posted outside on the bulletin. And it was scheduled the previous council meeting before.
I know all those things, yes. I just wanted it clarified.
So in other words, if you're not on Savvy Citizen, call Ms. Miles, she'll help you get there. And it's a really great app for those that haven't, honestly. Ask anyone that has it, I'll tell you it's great.
Is that posted on our Facebook page?
There's a Facebook page.
Do you think it should be?
No.
No? Or an announcement as, for a special community workshop?
I think what drew so much attention to the first workshop was the location because we, we were at a very different location and that just got a lot of people's attention and word spread around throughout the community. And we must have had, what, 30 or 40 people there that evening? I'm not sure why we didn't have as many, but it was posted in all the places that we posted it the first time. So I don't know why it just didn't get as much attention for whatever reason.
I don't know why either. Joe, I don't.
All the same places we put the attention.
I'm just thinking of ways we can make it more...
Savvy Citizen is really the greatest way.
In the forefront.
Because, I mean, everyone, no, seriously, everyone I've talked to that has the app. It's like, when she puts it out, you get a text message like that quick knowing and not, it's not just for that, you know? Water, allergies, things of that nature are posted on Savvy Citizen too. So it's a great communication tool that the city has. I mean, we found this, this app and went with it, we were, we thought it would be good, but it turned out to beat our expectation. I mean, this is much better than what I've seen a lot of municipalities have for communicating with their residents in almost instant real time. So if people don't have it, I encourage them to get the app.
I would too. I use it all the time and it's a great, great tool. And it has a lot of detail. Like I said, every board meeting, every commission meeting, everything. And when they change, the changes are updated, there's a separate post. It's very detailed. I like that about it. Well, any further discussion on agenda item number 14? Or any further questions? If there's no further discussion or questions, is there a motion related to agenda item 14?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 14 by selecting option B or option two as its statement.
I'll second that.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes. All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to agenda item number 15, consideration and possible action in regard to issuing an RFP for a project manager to oversee all aspects of the various city grant projects. Mr. Lynn?
Okay. This is an unusual one, but I want to preface this by saying something very hard, something very factual. As you all know, this is the very last year of my contract with the City of Kennedy. It is set to expire on March 9th, 2023. As of right now, the city manager's seat oversees projects in the City of Kennedy, especially the grant projects. Unfortunately, the GLO grant project has the potential to carry on well into 2025. The FEMA project that we're looking at has a potential to carry beyond the length of my contract and some other grants that we're looking at may carry on beyond that as well. I think it's most prudent for the City of Kennedy, it's my job as city manager, is to make sure the city is taken care of under all circumstances. We're going to need to find somebody that can actually oversee all these grant projects so that in the event that things continue in the trajectory that they're on on March 10th, when they're no longer here, that the city has one individual who is responsible for and knows the intimate details of all the grant projects so that they can ensure the city is moving forward in the direction it's in the move. That is the reason why we're going to get this project manager on board to do this. So if you all have any questions about this, I can answer anything.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
As always.
You're welcome.
So is that another employee hire?
No.
It's a contracted position.
This will be a contracted position and it will be able to be billed out at the grant funds under forced labor or under construction costs of that nature. So we really, we have very minimal budget funds on. But it's, it's a wise move because I can tell you right now, when I came to the City of Kennedy, the City of Kennedy had three interim city managers off of us, a sitting city manager, and nobody really knew what, what the heck was going on in this time. And they couldn't tell me, the new permanent city manager, what was going on and which direction things were going. And they couldn't communicate things to me very well. I had to get in with both feet and figure it out. So the last thing I want to see happen for the City of Kennedy is the city can't be in that same position next year. If we use a little bit of prudence and foresight and do this, the City of Kennedy will be sitting in a good position where the continuity of all the projects will continue forward. The city council will still remain in the loop with everything and they'll be, and then should there be a new city manager at some point next year, that person will have to come in and try to get up to speed on two or three major grant projects, which is a pain to try to get up to speed on. So I'm just saying this is the way to go for this.
I agree. I don't know how in the world things are going to continue if we don't, in the right direction, you know, without help. Simple as that.
Correct?
Any further questions or discussion?
How would we even start looking for someone?
It's real simple. All you all have to do is just, you make the motion to go out for it. I'll put the RFP out there, I'll do all the screening, I'll, I'll do everything to take care of it and make sure we get the right person on board. Because when it comes, unlike when it comes to a grant administrator or an engineer or contractor, when it comes to a project manager, they're going to have to contend with everything I've ever done in my entire career, plus all my education, plus everything. I'm going to run them through the bloody wringer to make sure they know what they're doing and they're going to do it right and take care of not just this council and the mayor, but these residents in this town as well. But there's, I'm not looking for someone who's going to come in here and be passive. They're going to have to, they're going to have to have some business sense and know how to do all aspects of everything, including procurement. know how to do all aspects of everything, including procurement. Because like I said right now, I can go out and get certain things at a price that other people can't get it because I know where to look. They're gonna have to know those things. And I'm gonna have to communicate a lot of what I have been working on with them to bring them up to speed over time.
Any further questions or discussion?
How many grant projects do we have right now, other than the GLO?
We have a total of two counting the GLO going on currently. And the one will probably wrap up pretty quick because it was on a shorter timeframe. It's the Lake of and Liva project. And then we have, April 29th is our deadline for filing for the DR 4485. So that's, right. So tonight when we select the grant administrator and the engineer, the first thing I'm gonna do after I let them, after they give me their PSAs and I sign the PSAs with them, is remember you're gonna work on the application for the 4485. Because we have to have that in by April 29th. I have another person come down, schedule them to talk to you about some other grants for the city. There will be TDA grants and things of that nature for parks and things of that nature. So this person's very knowledgeable about that stuff. So I'm looking, if all goes on the trajectory that I have envisioned for the City of Kennedy, hopefully by June, we will have five or six grant projects. Or, and we're expecting.
Any further questions or discussion?
I have one question. Isn't that what, and I may be confusing the two, but isn't that what Langford is doing with our GLO grant?
Absolutely not. Judy Langford is the grant administrator, nothing more. Her job is to make sure the paperwork is taken care of. She's not a project manager. She can't oversee the field people doing their job and make sure they're doing it correctly.
So you're looking for somebody to oversee?
I'm looking for somebody who's actually, Judy's gonna actually report to, as well as they would be the people who would have the engineers reporting to them and all construction people reporting to them as well. And we are the person in the field making sure that everybody's being held accountable to do what they need to be doing, making sure nobody's missing any steps. They will also be preparing weekly reports that I would be giving to council every week like I did with the sports complex. And then monthly, if you want, you can even bring them in and have them actually present instead of myself so that you won't have to ask them detailed questions.
What about designating one of our department heads as a project manager? So if it was a streets grant, our streets department could take the lead as project manager. Is that a possibility? Or are they just too tied down with other day-to-day tasks?
Well, with all the stuff that's going on in the City of Kennedy and everything, Mayor, while that is a great idea, I'd love to be able to do that. And that was my first choice, actually. It's not feasible. All of our department heads are working very hard and diligently. And to put them on top of grant projects like this would be asking more than we should.
Any further questions or discussion? If not, then is there a motion related to agenda item number 15?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 15.
The motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Before. What does something like that cost? What is that, what is the city looking at per cost?
Well, if we didn't have grant projects going on and we were doing something like this, we would want a project manager, say, depending upon what kind of project we were looking at, you could, you could be looking to pay anywhere up to about $200,000, $300,000 a year for a very, very good project manager for just one project. Okay? So it can get expensive for someone, but you get what you pay for. I mean, I do know, for an example, I'm finishing up, it's called a lean six sigma black belt, which is very renowned for project management, things of that nature. So if we brought in a black belt or a master black belt, someone that had those lean processes and that, it could get expensive. But at the end of the day, what we're looking at is we're looking at someone to come in just to provide the continuity for grants. We're not looking for someone to oversee the day-to-day operations. Mr. Hernandez does an awesome job of that. Mr. Perez does an awesome job of that. We don't need anyone for that. We just need someone to oversee these bigger projects that are basically life impacting, so to speak, to the City of Kennedy. You know, if we could see the foreseeable future and knew what was gonna happen next year, maybe we don't need this person, maybe we do. But my job as a city manager isn't to say, well, let's, let's go into a holding pattern and wait to see what happens. I can't do that. I have to look to the future. I know what my variables are. I know what my knowns are. And my known is on March 9th is my last day of my contract. So my first question is, is what happens to the City of Kennedy where I've served for three years on March 10th? I don't care about March 9th. I wanna know what happens to the residents and the people of this town on March 10th. And so on March 10th, I have to prepare for it. That's why we have this item. This item compares from March 10th, not March 9th. And doing it now, we get people at a better price.
It's about continuity and making sure there's no bumps in the road that are costly to the people of Kennedy.
Does the salary come from the grant project?
Right. We could, yeah, that's how we would do it. We would set it up, PSA that they're over the grant projects, and we'd build through the grants.
We're not gonna budget money for a grant administrator or project that will come from the grant itself.
That also comes from the grant. She's from, uh, Langford and Associates.
Right, yeah. Langford and Associates, yeah. Yeah, Langford and Associates and the other item on the agenda and that, those come from the, they're paid from the grants. The only thing we have is our match, whatever our match is.
Yeah, but I'm asking the salary for the project manager.
Right. It'll, it'll, it'll come from that.
It also comes from the grant.
From the grant.
From the grants. That's right. So we'll build it to the grants.
Excellent. He did pick you.
It's, it's like a temporary contracted position. So I guess if that, if this person loved doing business with Kennedy, I guess it would behoove them to go and seek out more grants so that they can continue getting paid and we can continue benefiting from the grant money. Because my, this is my biggest fear. My biggest fear is that Mr. Lynn leaves and we end up in the same situation we were before, where the citizens of Kennedy still can't turn on a water sprinkler except every two weeks.
Yes.
Between the hours of, why, 4:00 AM? And it is crazy.
So on that note, I will second your motion.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas to approve agenda item number 15. Issuing an RFP for project manager to oversee all aspects of various city grants. And a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor. Motion carries. That brings us to agenda item number 16. Consideration and possible action on selecting a grant administration services firm for pre-award grant administration services to be performed regarding the City of Kennedy application for funding in conjunction with the Texas Division of Emergency Management FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR-4485 COVID-19 Pandemic for Infrastructure Retrofit and Flood Risk Reduction Projects. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, so we ended up getting a, an email from TDEM regarding this hazard mitigation FEMA grant for COVID, it's COVID-19 related, it's what the ones are coming out of. The interesting thing about it is a lot of the eligible uses for the funds mimic those of the GLO, which is tied to Harvey. So when we applied for the Harvey grant, we made two applications. We applied one, the initial application, which were drainage off of Nottingham, Bel Air, Robin Hood, and those areas out there. And then the, the other, of course, is the water line. We ended up getting funded for the water line, EAS, and they have not funded that yet. So what we're looking at doing is we can do infrastructure retrofits, which we can go back into what's under the ground. We can come back and bring it up to, up to spec, code, or bring it up nice, whatever you wanna call it. That's part of this grant, as well as flood mitigation. So what we're gonna look at doing is we need a grant administrator to write the grant for us. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna go out and we're gonna apply twice, the TDEM as well. We're gonna apply once for flood mitigation. We're gonna pull back in Robin Hood and Bel Air and Nottingham, that whole area out there and some other areas in town. That's what the engineers for. That'll be the next line item. And we're gonna pull in these areas for flood mitigation and try to get funding for the flood mitigation, as well as we're gonna try to get funding for some infrastructure retrofits as well. So this is another way for us to maximize our budget dollars and through grant funds to where all we really have to expend is whatever the match will be at that point. Since this is a TDEM grant, I'm believing the match on this is gonna be around 25% instead of the 1% match that we have in the GLO. Usually FEMA grants are 25% match. So, but anyway, so that's, that's where we are on this. We have taken all the right steps to that. We've run twice, two weeks in a row for both of these positions. So we're well within the advertising parameters that they need to be on both of these. So the company that submitted, it was only a single company, TLC Engineering. TLC Engineering, they do have FEMA experience. They've been doing things for 17 years. As you can see, score sheets are on the back of this. We have a panel of four people go through their RFQs and break them on all these various different categories and that. I personally haven't worked at TLC Engineering, but they do, they do have a decent reputation in the market. So this is, we'll wrap. Just need to offer pre-award PSA. This is similar to what we did with Langford with the GLO, where we offered a pre-award PSA. They go out, they write the grant. We get the grant, then we move on and solidify things. If we don't get the grant, no, anything.
This is in advance of the grant application?
That is correct. They will actually be doing it for us.
Any questions or discussion?
I had another firm in mind, but he doesn't do FEMA grants. He would be perfect for it. As much as, go ahead.
How long did you advertise it?
We advertised actually three times for this particular position. We advertised once and we didn't really get anybody by the deadline. And we advertised two weeks and we're thereafter. So.
When does the deadline to submit for this grant?
April 29th. So if we weren't to do anything tonight, we'd have to go out for another two weeks and another two weeks behind schedule doing anything. So this, this, this one does not have a lot of time for us to wait on.
We have some time, a little bit of time. Pushing it?
Pushing it pretty bad. Yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna say we can't.
What is the amount of funding we're looking at?
It would just be determined by the estimate, engineers' estimate of probable costs whenever we do this. Yeah. I know that when we applied for the GLO grant, it was around $15 million for the drainage projects we were looking for. But I think we were also trying to kick in East Main on that. We had a way to tie it all into one project. So all that's gone. So probably we can, if we can't tie it in as one project, then we just do standalone Robin Hood, Bel Air, Nottingham area for their drainage, give that area relief out there. Probably only about $5 million for that one. I mean, with all the COVID-19 and everything, everyone started to give me the municipalities' money. I mean, it's, it's a no-brainer to go after this stuff. Especially when we have needs in the City of Kennedy that it can help off, offset our expenses and maximize our budget.
Considerable drainage needs throughout the community.
Yes.
The only question I have, and for good reason, how many employees that work or have relatives that work for TLC Engineering doing?
Absolutely.
Okay. None of y'all are related to anybody?
Never heard of them.
Just making sure.
Any further questions or discussion?
No, I mean, I'm not happy about one option either, but the way I look at it, is it's free money. So if we select TLC and we get awarded the grant, it's kinda hard to, I mean, I don't know. I guess, you know, technically it's not free money, but.
Nothing's free. That's why we're having trouble.
True, but that's, that's a whole discussion for another day.
As they, as they say in basketball, you know, you, you miss every shot, you don't shoot.
I, I think if there's, if there's opportunities for us to take advantage of grant funds, it saves taxpayers a lot of direct costs.
There's not really a big downside either, since it's all pending the award of the grant.
Right.
That's where the, it's not budgeted funds. It's, you know, it's outside of the budget.
And that's the risk for administrators take. That's how they, that's how they make their burden better.
Any further questions or discussion? If there's no further questions or discussion, is there a motion regarding agenda item 16?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 16 by pre-awarding TLC Engineering.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll?
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
No. No.
Councilwoman Sines?
No.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Well, this is the first time this has happened for me lately, gentlemen. Mr. Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor can only vote to break a tie, correct?
That's correct.
Chairmaker?
First time for everything. Well, I don't see a big downside in doing it. And we're seeing, hopefully, we're seeing soon the benefit of grant dollars and how they can improve this community. So I'm gonna vote in favor. Motion carries. Three, four, two against. On a related agenda item, agenda item number 17. Consideration and possible action on selecting an engineering firm for pre-award engineering services to be performed regarding the City of Kennedy application for funding in conjunction with the Texas Division of Emergency Management FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, DR-4485 COVID-19 Pandemic for Infrastructure Retrofit and Flood Risk Reduction Projects. Mr. Lynn, anything special about this agenda item?
We do have three people.
Instead of one?
Yes, sir.
That's always better.
But we do have three instead of one.
Yes.
You all have the scoring sheets there from, from the committee that, that's scored and put together. Which, by the way, I wanna send a big thank you out to the four individuals that, that did this. Ms. Miles, Mr. Perez, Mr. Hernandez, and Ms. Murphy for doing this. They did this while I was out. And I really appreciate them helping in doing that. The three firms are JD and N, which is Mercer. The three firms are JD and N, which is Mercer. If you don't know who Mercer is, Mercer is currently the organization. Mr. Mercer does a lot of electrical work for us at the plants and that. However, we'll just go with that. Mr. Mercer does a lot of electrical at the plants. Ardua, Ardua is the engineering firm that just wrapped up our eight-inch waterline extension force over there off of 181, where the proposed 172-unit apartment complex was supposed to go in out there by four years and that. And then Pop Dawson, I'm not real familiar with Pop Dawson Engineering, but they don't have any experience at the city of Kennedy, so. Between Mr. Mercer's organization, eight, I'll try that again, between Mr. Mercer's organization, JD and N, and Ardua, the difference between the two is my experience in the city of Kennedy, and this is just with me since I've been here the past two years. Mr. Mercer does a great job. He's very reliable. Pick up the phone, say, "I have an electrical problem, our old plant," he's Johnny on spot. But I have not used them in any engineering capacity in the last two years. So I'm not familiar with their engineering capabilities or skills. Ardua, conversely, have used them, and I've had several discussions with Mr. Atkinson of Ardua regarding the project, the eight-inch waterline project, and I, he and I work very well together. They do have a very good reputation in the industry, and they do very good engineering work, especially for waterline projects and sewer line projects and things of that nature. At the end of the day, if you took all the numbers and scored them, Mercer would come out ahead of Ardua just about three or four points. So there's that to consider. I personally recommend Ardua or Mercer for the engineering portion of it. I do really value Mr. Mercer and his knowledge of electrical work and things of that nature, but I think going forward for this kind of thing, I'm looking for somebody that I know and have had dealings with that I can definitely say, "I know what kind of work you're doing, what kind of pipe you're putting in the ground." So that would be my recommendation to use the council on this one. And again, this is all pre-award, so we have to do the award. They'll do the designs, the rough-up designs and that, and they'll come up with the engineering, estimate of probable costs that will be sent in, that'll help determine the amounts that we're going after and those type of things. So again, it's one of those things. It's all work and no pay unless you get the grant.
Any questions or discussion?
I think if Ardua is your pick, would be best. I'm comfortable going with them. I'm not saying Mercer wouldn't do a good job. I just think, you know, we have a lot of issues in Kennedy that need fixing today, technically years ago. And I don't want to be used as a training ground, you know, for a company. I mean, if they do great electrical work, that's awesome. They could be great engineers too. I don't know. But I think for something like this, where we can really help and benefit the community, I think we need to go with the trusted experience. Just my opinion.
What was your recommendation?
Any further questions or discussion?
I...
There's no further questions or discussion. Is there a motion regarding Agenda Item 17?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 17 by pre-awarding engineering services to Ardua.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second? Is there a second? So Mr. Lynn, just to clarify, there's not much point going forward with one without the other.
That is correct. We have to have engineers' designs.
You can't apply with only the credit administration services firm, but without the engineering firm on board.
That is correct.
I'd like to make a motion, second the motion.
Okay.
Here we go.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 18, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution 22-01, a resolution of the City of Kennedy establishing that the Bluebonnet Days Festival serves a public purpose and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for the temporary closure of U.S. Business 181, South Second Street, between Escondido and Main Streets and State Route 72, Main Street, between Second and Ninth Streets for the purpose of the Bluebonnet Parade Event. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, Councilman Mayor. So in order to have our parade, Texas Department is requiring us to enter into an agreement to closing the streets. The parade route is the very last document in your packet there, and this line item showing you what is actually standing here. So this is just more of the formality, just so you can go ahead and have the parade, so the Texas Department can have this agreement on file.
And this is similar route to what we've done in past years, correct?
Yes.
Looks like it's the same route we've always used.
Any questions or discussion? There are no further questions or discussion. Is there a motion regarding Agenda Item 18?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 18.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Parker, a second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. Brings us to Agenda Item 19, consideration of possible action in regard to Ordinance 22-03, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82, Traffic and Vehicles, Article 3, Specific Street Regulations, Division 8, Truck Routes, Section 82-241, Operation Restricted, Providing a Repealing Clause, Providing Perseverability, and Providing an Effective Date. Mr. Lynn?
Okay, this is a result of Councilman Rodriguez had asked me to bring this back to the council and go and create the ordinance. What's happening is semi-trucks coming off of 72, grabbing Houston Street, trucking down Houston Street to make deliveries at Ashland. It's tearing up Houston Street pretty bad. So what we want to do is we want to put some no-truck signs up and reroute them so that they now have to use the truck route. The only issue there was that the way the signs are for the truck routes, they come down Business 72 and they have to hook a left to go to Flax Plant. So we're also relaxing it a little bit so they can come down, hook a right for deliveries down to Ashland. So since I believe I actually specified that in the ordinance, that it is just for, yes, it's just for deliveries to Ashland, that they're permitted to make the right to come up 181 down to, well, I was told you could just drive straight into Ashland off of 181. So they still really have to follow the truck route to get out of town because they can't come down Second Street. So it's all we're doing is just amending this to get them off of Houston Street and then give them a little bit of permission to come down Business 181, right into Ashland's parking lot to make their deliveries, then they have to go right back up Business 181 and either catch 72 Business back to 72, 792, or take Flax Plant to...
Sounds like a good public safety improvement.
Chief Ash had a lot to do with this and helped in designing this, and I want to thank him for that, so.
They do use Karn Street as well. Are they allowed to do that? Like when you're at Six Point, I've seen, I was actually behind a truck that went down Karn Street to, of course, they went left.
Karn Street?
Yeah. Truck Route 72, when you come down and it comes and meets the Six Point, and instead of taking a left to get on to Escondido and then Flax Plant, Karn's goes straight. So I'm asking, can they use Karn Street right?
They shouldn't be using Karn Street right, Chief.
I mean, they have, because it's...
That's not the truck, there's not the truck. Right, so Karn, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. Does that one block?
Technically, they're supposed to keep coming down on the truck route.
Okay.
But some, yes, they can cut on Karn, but that is not the truck route. It would not be on the road. Under the current, under the ordinance now, you can't, that's not a truck route. I don't know if you want to include that, if we had not talked about it.
Well, I don't see any reason to. We want to force everybody, these bigger trucks, 26,000 pounds, and have to be taking the business routes, the truck route that's established. There's a reason why it is, because they're mainly Texas Department roads and they're built to handle the weight rather than our little side streets, so.
Yeah, well, I don't...
Well, Karn's isn't...
They're going down Karn's.
Karn's is a Texas Department road, I believe, isn't it? It's an FM?
Um...
And then on top of that, if they are not allowed to go down Karn's and they're going, they're going to have to make that sharp right turn. We've got a hole right there. This is going to cause a lot of problems and plowed out just probably multiple times because they're going to try to make that, you know, you're coming in at an angle and you've got to make that sharp turn as opposed to just using that one block of Karn's.
I'm going to have to drive and see, because I'm not going to stand up here and say, you're saying Karn's and I'm not picturing it at all. Okay? So, I mean, I know y'all know what y'all are talking about. I'm just not standing here. So if we need to make that adjustment and if that is a state road, we can make that adjustment. It's not a big deal.
I just, I bring it up because I was behind an ATW yesterday and they went down Karn's and I'm sure it was a mistake because then he turns left. Like, oh, well, he's going to go to Ashland, you know? But he turned the other way, so I'm assuming he just took the wrong. He didn't take the truck route, but...
Well, I'll tell you what, if y'all want to, so Karn's, Chief, I'm rocking the water with hands here, buddy.
Well, we don't have our...
Yeah, so Karn's, so when they're coming down this Karn Street...
Yes, I know what you're talking about.
Okay. If I'm the truck, okay, and I'm coming down Karn Street and I want to go to Ashland, where do I go, let her left?
You would turn, you would turn right.
I would turn right?
Yes.
Okay, so if I turn right, if I turn right, the question is, do we want to permit them coming back to turn left up Karn's or make them go down?
No, the question is, do you want to let them go down Karn Street?
No, well, when we write the order, if we're going to include Karn's, if we're going to include Karn's, we have to include it to permit them to come down and turn right. Okay? But a driver is going to think, "Oh, yeah, I can do this." He's going to think maybe he can turn left and come back up. So that's the next question. Do we want to permit, is it safe for them to do that?
I don't think so. I mean...
We'll have to go look at it, to be honest with you.
Okay.
If you have traffic coming down, you've got ATW, you're trying to turn up, it's not a big, it's not a big, they can't turn around, they can't make it. I don't think they can turn left.
So what we can do is this, okay? You have the ordinance in front of you that actually takes care of the Houston Street issue immediately, okay? If you go ahead and approve this as is for that, then Chief and I can get together on Karn Street and figure out what we need to do. I can always bring back another ordinance that amends it again to add Karn Street and the particular directions that we need to add to that at a later time. Because we do have to consider when we're writing the ordinance, going to Ashland and coming from Ashland. So I have to consider both directions as to what we're going to allow them to do. Anyway, that's why this is on the agenda.
Any further questions or discussion?
Yeah, if we, so we approved this one, then the next meeting, for example, we could easily have another...
Right, and just add the directions for Karn's.
Submit it.
But you can look at it and figure out if you need to or not, yeah.
But at least by doing this, because this is a truck route and we're changing the sign, I will want to publish it in the paper, so I'll get it in the paper as quickly as possible. It doesn't take effect until the first of the month, so the people have time to be educated on it and know that they can't do these things. Then we'll put the signs up and, you know, that, so it's going to be the same way with the Karn's portion, it will be in effect in the first and month after.
Any further questions or discussion? There are no further questions or discussion. Is there a motion in regard to Agenda Item Number 19?
I have a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 19.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Parker, second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 20, consideration of possible action in regard to Ordinance 22-04, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, canceling the May 7, 2022 regular election for Council District 2, declaring each unopposed candidate elected to office, providing directions to the city manager, providing a repealing clause, providing perseverability, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Mayor, we did this last year for Districts 5 and Districts 3 when they ran unopposed. District 2's Councilman Rodriguez is running unopposed. All this does is just cancel the election for District 2 and declares Councilman Rodriguez the de facto winner since he's running unopposed. Then we'll have to post this on Election Day right here at City Hall. I'll get all that taken care of, so.
Basically saves us some administrative work.
Saves, yeah, saves the residents time from trying to, you know, select someone for number two whenever he's running unopposed, they can just skip that.
Simple.
He's already here.
Any questions or discussion on Agenda Item Number 20? If not, is there a motion on Agenda Item Number 20?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 20. I'll second.
And a motion from Councilmember Douglas, second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor, motion carries. Agenda Item Number 21, consideration of possible action in regard to Ordinance 22-05, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending Ordinance 22-01, Section... An Ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas Amending Ordinance 22-01, Section 7, Amending the Location Where Early Voting Is to Be Conducted. Mr. Lynn?
Thank you. Okay, as was mentioned earlier, nor Ms. Miles, City Secretary before, the Karn County Elections Office doesn't have enough adequate machines for us to do early voting here and the auditorium has, as has been historically done. I apologize to the residents of City Kennedy for that. Unfortunately, something beyond the control of both the city and the county. So what this does is when we passed the ordinance earlier to declare the election, we had a different, Elections Administrator was told everything was going to be the same as it was last year. It was written that way to do everything here. This just amends that portion of the ordinance only that states the date for the, I mean, the location for the early voting to be 210 Calvert Street. So we will get that posted on the front window immediately upon passage by the council tonight. All residents will have to go for early voting. Early voting's still going to be the same dates and times as in the original ordinance. It's, the early voting's going to be at the Elections Office at 210 West Calvert, Suite 140 in Karn's City this year. Unfortunately, that's because of the lack of available machines, so.
Any questions or discussion? I have one. Mr. Lynn, it sounds like, like you said, it's beyond our control for this year. Is there anything we can do now so that this doesn't happen a year from now?
Well, I believe that the particular individual who's taken over, she's done this numerous times and she's very top notch at what she does. Like I said earlier, she walked into a horn's nest and she's trying to get it all done, but she doesn't just have the time to get these things done today. What we can do is we can reach out to her and let her know that if she needs anything from the City of Kennedy, if she needs our help in anything later in the year when the election's over with, getting things ready for next year and let us know so we can make sure that we can do this here in the auditorium next year versus having to ask our residents to travel to Karn City.
Yeah, I certainly hope so. It's a great inconvenience for, for a city election to have to drive to another city to vote early. So I hope we can figure out a way to solve this before the next election rolls around.
We'll, we'll work with her. Ms. Miles and her have been in contact, they have a good relationship, so I'm sure they'll be able to work something out, take care of our residents.
Any further questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. If not, is there a motion regarding Agenda Item 21?
I'd make a motion to approve Agenda Item 21.
A motion from Councilmember Sines, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 20, I'm sorry, we already took care of 22 earlier in the meeting. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 23, Executive Session, Closed Session, City Council Meeting Closed Session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in A, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, Presenter: City Manager Lynn. So ladies and gentlemen, it is 8:37 PM and we are journeying into closed session. You all are welcome to stay if you'd like to hear the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to leave, so. Okay, it is 9:17 PM and we are on Agenda Item Number 24, Open Session, City Council will reconvene in open session at which time action on the matters discussed in closed session may be considered. Section 8, 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property. Is there any questions or discussion regarding Agenda Item 24? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on Agenda Item 24?
We just want to know what y'all came up with. Well, can I speak?
Yes, Commissioner Dubby, please step one.
You know, I, I saw this thing on the agenda and I felt it was worded wrong because it didn't identify what real property was, which, it could have, he said it's the Parkway, it could have been the Commission Center or whatever. But this thing has been dragging on a long time already and, you know, it's something that's, that's used every day by a lot of people. San Antonio River Authority is, to me, has been a no-brainer to have it, to take care of it, to maintain it, to operate it, whatever you want to say. It was three months ago, four months ago, we sat here, we talked, we discussed this about the Parkway and I guess due diligence was done, I would think. I know that Mr. Elke had did a lot of research and provided some stuff that was very informative about the, 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 that's the Parkway and the ownerships and stuff. And I really would like to see the court, I meant the court, the, the City Council explain what their feelings are, or if, if y'all could, you know, go ahead and approve the transfer of the property.
Thank you, Commissioner Dubby. Mr. Lynn, do you have a response to how the Agenda Item was ordered?
No, it was taken right out of the government code.
There's no reason to, no reason to be specific about the specific property?
No, the real property exclusion is worded generically to protect the city's interest if they're buying property or selling property so that people who are out there trying to maybe influence that the city isn't at an adverse disadvantage. But then, once the council moves forward, everything is completely transparent.
Any discussion from the council? The public is interested to know how you feel. I'll, I'll speak my heart. I'm in favor of conveying the property to River Authority. I think it's a great thing for the City of Kennedy and we want it to continue as long as possible. That's my two cents, but it doesn't matter because unless there's a tie vote, these four will, will vote and they'll decide which direction they choose. So if anyone else would care to speak? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'll make a motion for the City of Kennedy to convey the land that was donated to the city and the land that the city purchased for $51,968.95 that make up what is now, part of what is now known as Escondido Creek Parkway. And that the land be conveyed back to the city upon any abandonment by Sarah, well, conveyed to Sarah, sorry, I left that out.
And the donated land.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilmember Douglas and a second from Councilmember Parker. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Absolutely, yes.
All present voted in favor, motion carries. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 25, Items to Consider for Placement on Future Agendas, Governing Body, City Manager, City Attorney. Does anyone have an item for placement on future agendas?
I don't per se, Ruby, but looking back on the special city council meeting, I think Councilman Rodriguez requested to add the policy manual changes for the agreements.
That's correct.
And it wasn't on this one?
That was mine, too. I left it off on purpose. I'm not done with it yet.
You're not done with it?
I'm not done with it yet.
Will it be on the April?
When I'm done, when I'm done doing what I need to do with it, I'll put it on the agenda for the council to discuss.
For the April regular meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
The April meeting?
Should be.
I was expecting an item on this agenda for your semi-annual performance evaluation.
Not semi-annual.
Isn't it every six months?
No, semi-every annual.
Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we, yeah.
So there, there wasn't an evaluation six months ago?
It doesn't matter, the contract states it.
Yeah, but it's.
But y'all did it six months for whatever reason.
I thought that was all.
But regardless of the fact, I'll take care of that later.
Will it be on the agenda for the April meeting?
Most likely.
Is that soon enough?
Can we do it sooner than that?
It's up, it's up, it's between me, it's actually between me and the councils when we do it. So, you know, I don't see, well, some of the things that were said tonight, I personally don't see a reason to do it any sooner than that.
Well, I, I mean, I.
That way Councilman Rodriguez could definitely be here. I mean, I have a lot I could say.
Yeah, definitely, but no, my, my thought is that we always, I think the last time we kind of got, it's very long and late. So I, for me personally, I'd like just a standalone meeting with that only.
Unfortunately, that's going to cause me to have to go into my schedule because of some things that were said tonight. My schedule has changed.
What's changed?
My schedule after 5 o'clock.
Okay.
So right now, we are where we are on the monthly meetings.
I'm confused.
I'm confused, too. What was said tonight that changes anything?
Okay, if you want, we can go back into executive session to talk. I'm not going to talk about it in open session. That's going to be the end of that, because it's involving me, it's becoming a personnel matter, and I'm not going to talk about it in open session.
Well, does anybody want to go back into closed session? I don't.
I don't either.
This meeting's been long enough for me.
I don't either.
On the other hand, how do we move forward?
You just move on. I'll, I'll get it there. I know they want it on the agenda, I'll get it there.
Well, you know, it's my understanding, Mr. Lynn, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the mayor can call a special meeting at any time for any purpose.
You can call it, doesn't mean everyone's going to be in attendance. And if you call it and I'm unavailable, I'm not going to show up for it.
So do we have an evaluation without the person who's being evaluated because they decided to stay home?
Okay, Mayor, I'm going to say this at this point. At this point, you're venturing into something that doesn't need to be in open session that I'm not consenting to do. I've already made the statement, I'm not talking about this in open session, so either we move on adjourned or we go into executive.
Mr. Lynn, we're on Agenda Item 25. Items to Consider for Placement on Future Agendas. So that's what we're talking about.
I understand, however, it involves an employee, more specifically me, okay? And I'm telling you, I'll put it on an agenda, okay? That's not a problem. Okay?
Well, let me ask the council this.
The council doesn't have a standalone say in this. The contract is very specific. It happens when the council and I agree, not when the mayor decides. Now, at this point in time, we can move on, I'll take care of it. Or not.
Oh, it's not in March? I thought it was in March.
Is, just for informational sake, March 22nd, that's a Tuesday, correct? I don't, I don't have my phone with me, so I don't have access to a council.
It is a Tuesday.
So I'd like to ask the council, if I called a special meeting for Mr. Lynn's evaluation, would you all attend?
Actually, Mayor, you can't call for that because the contract says between me and the council, not the mayor. I'm going to stick to that because it's very strictly worded in that the date and time of my review is between me and the council. So you can't call the special meeting for my review.
I believe the law says for any purpose.
I'm telling you, the contract is prohibiting it.
Well, it sounds like we need to consult with Ms. Gadd about this.
Well, then maybe we just need to move on, you can call her tomorrow.
That may be the best solution for tonight.
That's what I've been saying.
I'll contact Ms. Gadd tomorrow and then I'll poll the council members to see who's available.
And that'll be a walking quorum if you do that.
No, it's not a walking quorum. Ms. Gadd is.
Actually, it is a walking quorum.
No, this, this came up before.
Okay, well, I'm not going to debate it with you, but I'll.
If, if it's on the April agenda, we could always table that and then reschedule it, correct?
Can I always do that, yeah?
So if, if it's on the April agenda and someone's not here, at that time, council could table it and.
Exactly.
Reschedule it.
Well, I think the concern was that April would be possibly too late.
It's never too late because if I agree to it, it's okay. That's what you're not hearing. I'm saying it's fine. I'm saying it's fine for April.
Okay.
So we're good.
Okay, then it will be on the agenda for our April regular meeting instead of a standalone meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other items to consider replacement on future agendas? If not, then we'll move on to Item Number 26, Announcements of Community Interest and or Upcoming Events. Any announcements?
The Karn County Humanities Organization is having a crawfish boil on March 26th. You can get tickets from any board member or from Dynasty.
The Karn County Humane Society?
Humane Organization, KCHO. If anybody wants to donate items for asylum auction or live auction or just wants to write a fat check, we will take that, too.
It's a fun event for a great cause. Thank you for mentioning that change. Any other announcements?
I have to, actually, I do.
Yes.
Karn's, second Friday breakfast, there's a location change. It will be this Friday at 7:00 AM at the Administrative Building at Kennedy ISB. And it is open to the public. And then, of course, Lagunitas, April 22nd and April 4th. So you beat me to the punch, it's no longer going to be at Nutrition, correct?
It's at 7:00?
Yeah.
Thank you for that, Jolene.
I think I can make that one.
Any other announcements? Yes, sir.
This is past, I've been, I wanted to say something, but I don't know. I should have said it when we were talking about the location of the city. These trash piles, people go put limbs in front of their house, other street, they're supposed to pick them up. And I wondered why they would go down the street and maybe, maybe 10 houses that have limbs down there and they just pick up two piles. So I asked.
Mr. Lynn, do you have an explanation?
Are you talking about?
I know, I know, I know what the reason is now. You're supposed to turn in when you have a pile of limbs there. Well, a lot of these people don't even know they're supposed to turn in, they just think they come and pick them all up. Y'all need to change that and then they would pick them all up.
That's set by the company.
But I know what, why he did that because he picked up somebody's good wood that, that they were going to do something else with. So they got mad and that's so, you're trying to, you know, make everybody happy. But that's, that's why we got all them damn limbs laying here for years at somebody's house because they don't come down here and tell you. Now, that, that is, I know, a, a bad problem out there because I see it when I drive around town, I see the limbs. And I know these people, I don't even know they told us that they got limbs. And they'll sit there for maybe a year or two, but I see these trucks when they get out here with their trawlers and stuff to come pick them up, they just pick up one here, one over there, down, and they got them on both sides of the road, they could take four or five trucks to clean all that up. I know that, but they can't because they, they haven't been told to do it. I guess they come over here to get numbers, house number in the street before they go up there.
The residents call in and tell us they have to pick up, and we turn in a list.
Right.
So, and that's been the way.
If they don't call in, they just pile their wood up, and they think they're going to pick it up when they come down the street.
Yeah, but it's been that way forever, even before I even got here.
That's why it's been dirty forever.
You know, that's one of those things I think we can help educate.
I'll, I'll look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you need to be thinking about that. That's a little tricky right there.
Especially with our conversation last month and the two other businesses and that.
We'll work on it, sir. Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
And we, we don't have a place, I don't live in Kansas. We used to have a place where you could haul all these gravel to the city, you know, to take care of them down there. Now it's all going to lay here in front of their house to get the hell to turn it in. And then those guys don't come too often. You know my dad, you go there every time.
We'll see what we can do to improve the situation. Appreciate you letting us know. Any other announcements of community interest or upcoming events? If not, I have two. My usual coffee in the park with the mayor is Saturday, March twelve, nine AM to eleven AM at the Escanito.
Might be cold.
By the look. Shelby will build us a fire.
We'll build a fire. Fire man.
I've only got two more of these, so I'm looking forward to it. Nine, seven, eight, whether it's cold or not. Nine AM to eleven AM, Escanito Creek Parkway Pavilion, second Friday of each month. And the one I'm most excited about is former councilman reached out to me, Alberto Balduramos, and he reminded me that the city has an ordinance that they passed in two thousand nineteen declaring the Kennedy Day of Prayer, and it falls in the month of March. And Mr. Lynn verified this, and so we were unable to host this event in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, but we are bringing it back this year. So March fourteen, Second Annual Kennedy Day of Prayer, ten AM, that's a Monday. Right here on the steps of City Hall, I've invited all the local pastors, and several have already confirmed that they will be here for that. And I'm very excited about that because we need prayer more than ever right now, not just for ourselves, but for everything else that's happening in the world, so. Looking forward to that. I hope anyone who's able to attend will be here. I know I'll be here. I'll, if you'd like, I'll email this to you. Any other announcements? If not, then, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. Item number twenty-seven, it is nine thirty-five PM, and we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.